Do we need to wait for Corporation Council before we get started?
Yeah, probably. I guess we could do the, should we do the, should we just wait totally? Or should we do the first three niceties here and then, and then see? I'm sure he'll be, he'll be right along.
It's up to you. We can always, we can wait or do roll call there.
I guess we can do that. And then if we want to do anything else first, I'm sure in the meantime, he'll be, he'll be along. So.
Oh, here, here he is right now.
Okay, great. Okay. I'd like to call the planning, the city, the Binghamton City Council Planning Committee into session for on Thursday night, May 28, 2020. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Lee, could you do roll call for us?
Yes. So we have Councilman Skringi.
President.
Councilwoman Friedman.
President.
And Chairman Strong.
President.
That's all three here for the planning committee.
Okay. I'd like to just take a moment if I could, just, I just want to do a quick review of, of kind of how we got here. At the business meeting on Wednesday, May 20th, there was a spirited discussion about 20-49, which would, would allow the sale to tobacco products at $494.5, Shenango Street. During that discussion, Councilwoman Freeman shared the main points of a conversation that she had with the store property owner. And certainly reiterate my appreciation of her taking the time and consideration. Being in her district, but still a wise thing to do, get his take on this. And, and in that conversation, he basically pointed out that he was not going to display or advertise tobacco products. And the conversation in essence turned to what would some type of an amendment look like? You know, maybe not just paraphrasing his exact words, but at least pointing out the spirit of what he was saying that he was not going to do. What would that look like? And what, what should that process take? So it said that, that we should have a committee meeting. And definitely I took steps to honor that process. I thought the process would maybe be a little less formal, but here we are. And that's okay. Just talking to Councilwoman Friedman, I think this is a good thing that we're doing this. And, you know, we don't need to take a lot of time, but I think even taking a small amount of time shows, shows the discussion we had as, as the whole council and the seriousness of which we take. Any, you know, any change to the city's code, regardless of our personal feelings about it, it's something that, and this subject matter, when you add this to children and schools and the whole subject matter is something that we all take very, very seriously. And I think that, that we show that. Since that meeting, information's come to light that about legislation that was signed into law by Governor Cuomo on April 3rd. That might render such an amendment that we could do a moot point or maybe not allowable at all. So I would like to ask at this time for the Corporation Council, the city of Binghamton, Ken Frank to speak to this law that was, is set to take effect across New York State on July 1st, if you could.
Hi, Councilman. Does everybody hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Great.
Yes.
I, for some reason, I'm my, it says my mic's on, but there's, it says share my webcam, but I'm not getting a picture. So I don't know if you're getting a picture.
No, I saw, I saw you start to come in and then I don't see you, but I, but we hear you fine. So.
Okay. Well, let's all, whoops. Uh, yeah, we looked at the law. Obviously Sharon had been involved. She was unable to make it this evening. We, we took a look at the law. What New York State has done has enacted a, a new section of the law that will apply to, it's actually part of the budget that they did this. And a new section of the law that will prohibit advertising of tobacco products, which would include vaping and, you know, a variety of things within 1,500 feet of a school. So in essence, the state has decided they're going to create the rules regarding advertising for tobacco products near a school. Now, we could make it 2,000 feet, but we can't do less than the state. In essence, the state has what it's called preempted the issue. So a silly thing, but this is the easiest example, you know, New York State has criminal laws, right? If you commit a murder, New York State determines what that punishment is. The city of Binghamton can't create its own law for murder. Right? That's, that's the easiest example of preemption. The state has decided what the parameters would be and whoops. Sorry, I don't know why it keeps doing that. What the parameters would be. So my concern here would just be what happens between if you approve this on Wednesday and it's June 3rd and the new law doesn't take effect until July 1. You would want to put the same conditions on the, on the property that are going to be in effect from New York State on July 1. So they're not advertising for tobacco for a month. And, I mean, school's out anyway, so it doesn't have a lot of difference, but we want to make sure we're being consistent with state law.
Okay. Do you see anything that, that might stop that from going to effect on July 1st? Any other stays or anything that, any, anything that might try to get in the way of that?
No, but I think it would be a good idea that when you do an approval, you would approve it. We'll take that language right out of the New York state law and apply it to this property. So that even if for some reason, well, as I said, the state law doesn't start until July 1. But if for any reason that was held over past July 1, your rule would still be in place pending the state law.
Ken, I've got a question for you. This new law would not grandfather in any businesses, correct? This would be a prohibition for any tobacco advertising within 1,500 feet of a school?
Yes. I didn't see any grandfathering provision in it.
Okay. And my other question is, I don't know if you had a chance to look over the, the language that I had drafted up, but is there anything in there that you see that would be in conflict with the, the New York state law?
Uh, Councilwoman, I apologize. I don't have what you drafted in front of me. I, I can take a look at it tomorrow and make sure that what we have is consistent. I remember reading it at one point, but I don't, I'm, I'm on my home computer now. If I go into my work computer, then I don't have a microphone.
Right. I understand that struggle. Um, so, so basically, I mean, there's nothing, um, the only thing that, I, I mean, I'm looking it over now. I don't think there's anything that allows tobacco advertising or allows more, um, um, what is the word I'm looking for? Less stringent enforcement tobacco advertising.
Correct. The city could be more restrictive, but you really can't be less. And actually, if the state decides preemption and they've decided everything, then we just have to do, go along with the state standards. But here, ours was 500 feet. So 1,500 feet should be more than adequate.
Right. Okay. So I'm, I'm wondering now, um, if, I mean, my, my personal opinion would be, I think it is still prudent for us to, to include this amendment, even though the advertising of tobacco will be prohibited. Because I do think it shows that we are ahead of the curve and not just following along with the prohibitions that New York State has put forth. That's my personal opinion. What do you all think?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Friedman. Councilwoman Skringi, what's your, what's your thoughts on the scenario?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I apologize. I had to cut off because for some reason I couldn't log into my city email from my desktop. So I had to.
I couldn't either. Don't get me wrong. And I thought it was crazy.
Yeah, but for some reason, yeah. Councilwoman Friedman, the, the text that you're talking about, I just want to make sure I have the right one. That was the email that you sent out today at 4:49, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's, yeah. So that's, that's weird. So the email is working on my council phone, but it's not working on my browser on my computer. So I, I literally just got this like five minutes ago. Um, yeah. Judging from what I can read here, uh, from what you proposed, it, it does look like the text is consistent with kind of the spirit of the discussion of what you were proposing. Uh, or what some council members were proposing rather, uh, at the last council meeting. It obviously is less restrictive in terms of the 500 versus the 1,500 feet. That is coming down in the law, the state law rather, January, uh, July 1. Um, I'm of the personal opinion that given the new evidence of the state mandate that's going to be coming down, regardless of what level of preemptiveness might be there in that state law or not. And considering additionally to the fact that there's no grandfathering clause, so there's going to obviously have to be an adjustment period for businesses statewide for this, as well as obviously throughout the city. Um, I'm kind of the general conclusion that the state mandate, um, in an even more restrictive sense, by three times the amount of feet from 500 to 1,500 feet, uh, kind of holds that spirit. And if that's something that the state is going to put into place, considering that we're what, four and a half weeks away from July 1, 5, somewhere around there. I'm not entirely sure adding the amendment is prudent at this point. Considering the fact that for that period, it still creates a differentiation between that particular business owner in question for this proposed variance on Shenango Street versus the others who also are even closer to the school than the one in question currently is. So that's, that's my kind of general sense of it.
Um, Councilman Skringi, if I can clarify the, I believe, if I'm correct, the, that the new New York state mandate is with the 1,500 feet is for tobacco advertising, whereas the 500 feet is for tobacco sales. So it, right. So the proposed legislation is not necessarily more or less stringent than the new New York state mandate. Does that make sense?
No, it does make sense and you're, and you're not wrong. I, I don't think that nullifies what I said, but I do think you're right that there is an additional dynamic to the local factor. So yeah, you're right about that. Absolutely.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. I think maybe I misunderstood what you had initially said then. Um, because I, I had interpreted what you said to be that the proposed amendment to our legislation is forbidding within 500 feet tobacco advertising or. Right. Okay. I'm sorry. So I, I misunderstood what you said. I apologize.
No, that's, no, 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 not at all, not at all. And if my mic cut off or something like that, I apologize about that as well. But, um, no, you're, you're right on that differentiation there.
Okay. Yeah, obviously regardless of the amendment, we're going to have to vote on the introductory ordinance 20-49 as it stands either way.
Right.
Will stand alone as far as the, the sale to begin with. So, okay, um, Councilman Riley, if you'd like to add anything, since you've taken the time to join us, we welcome you to add anything to the conversation if you'd like to.
Yeah, I feel better now.
Yeah, we all have tech issues.
I minimized the menu bar, so I couldn't talk right away, but I, I was not privy to the verbiage Councilwoman Friedman sent. So I can't speak to that. However, I still think even with the new legislation or the new policies that are, are coming down from the state, we have to make sure that we are consistent. This is the first time, as I mentioned before, this is the first time the, the process has been placed in the lap of city council in terms of being able to support the legislation that passed in 2014 and then the revision in 2019. So if there is something that significantly causes us to waver from that original legislation, which again, the city of Binghamton was recognized for. And I, I think I sent the website, but nevertheless, it's something that the city was very proud of at the time. So unless something has changed significantly, that would support us not continuing in that process. Which is why you guys decided to convene so that extra information could be added to kind of address the concerns of the various uh, community members as well as the faculty and staff of the school that is in close proximity. So I just wanted to bring that back, highlight those facts again before the revision is submitted. Because that will be important as we again legislate on behalf of our residents.
Councilwoman Riley, I actually sent the, um, the text in the chat function.
Oh, here. Oh, okay.
So I had emailed it prior, but, right, but now you can look at it.
Chairman, for one second.
Yes. Go ahead, Ken.
So, uh, as Councilman Riley was just mentioning, you have two different things here. One is whether or not you want to vote to allow this within 500 feet of the school. That is purely a city ordinance. My understanding was that the last business meeting, one part of the discussion was, well, maybe we should consider restrictions if we're going to approve it. And one of those restrictions had to do with advertising. And then the state came up with this proposal, which is going to address the advertising after July 1.
Right.
Right. I, I still think in Councilwoman, uh, I, I haven't looked at the resolution. I see it in the chat here, so I will take a look. If you're going to approve it, if there are going to be restrictions, I think you would want to put them in between now and July 1. Because they're going to be applicable to everybody. I don't see any reason somebody should be able to put up. If the state has indicated they don't want advertising, let somebody put up a sign for a week. But you do have two different things. One is the 500 feet. Should we allow it or not? And then two, if you're going to allow it, what should those conditions be? And if one of those is advertising, do you want to do it now? Do you want to wait till July 1? Though, and are there other conditions that you had in mind? That, that's where you are.
Right. No, that's, that was the, that was the gist of, of, of where we were, we're heading with this. I don't, I don't really, I don't really see the need to expand, um, you know, expand the conversation necessarily um, over and above what we had intended to do. Obviously, you know, somebody on Monday night, when we're all together could, you know, could bring something up. They want to, want to mention it, but, yeah, my, yeah. This is tough. Obviously wouldn't have got this far if I wasn't struggling with this and really taking this seriously. I think, you know, I don't, I think with the legislation that's coming out, I don't, you know, I think I, I would tend to, to agree with, with Councilman Skringi in the sense that it's, it's, I think we're acknowledging the fact that we're fully in agreement with that legislation. Not that it matters whether we're in agreement with Governor Cuomo in the legislature or not. But I think that, I think that we can safely say that at least the majority of us are in agreement with that. And it does equalize it across the state in essence. So everybody's, there's no grandfathering. There's no exemptions that I can see. 500 feet in New York City. So they've already addressed that. We're 2, 500 feet would be, be really tough with the, the proximity of all those businesses. So it looks to me that they thought through this pretty well and that it takes away across our city or across our state. You know, the fact of two businesses being subject to different rules than, than this one or a variety of businesses. I think, I think there's, there could be two stores, including a Weis right down the road for me, that might be within 500 feet of Ben Franklin. So this is going to affect, um, you know, multiple places across the city and state. So, at this point, Ken, what do you mean, is, is it, if we want to do something, do we have to formalize some kind of a vote, yea or nay on doing it or not? Do we have to, since we convened and got this far, do we, do we table it and just see if anybody else wants to discuss it Monday night or not? Do we, what, what's your suggestion at this point? It's the first time, obviously, any of us, at least for me and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Friedman, that we've actually done a committee meeting. And according to President Scanlon, he's never done one, which I'm not sure if that's true or not, but so at least we're blazing story here a couple of months into our fifth as council. So.
Generally, as a result of a committee member at your next meeting, which in this case would be Monday night, uh, you would report the results of that meeting. Right? Did you come to a conclusion? Did you decide, you know, as a group, did you decide? Yes, we want to include this language. We had other, you know, whatever it is you come to a decision on. And if, you know, it's not a unanimous decision, then on Monday night, you know, Chairman, you would speak and say, this is what I think we concluded, but any other member of the committee could say, you know, well, I think we also added this. Uh, my concern is what I would like to do is that after the discussion on Monday night, I want to redraft the legislation. So I'm putting in whatever conditions you've agreed upon. I prefer to do that, send it to everybody to try to avoid too many motions on the floor to change language. I'd like to walk away on Monday night knowing that this is the language that at least the majority is going to agree on. So you don't necessarily have to take a vote at a committee meeting. That's, it's, it's all even less formal than a work session. But if you feel, but you do want to try to get everybody on the same page. And if you're not, at least know what the different viewpoints are.
Okay. So, so I think that's, I think that's, that's what we'll do. I will report on Monday night to the, the councils. So I guess it would be safe to say at, at this point in time that Councilwoman Friedman would be in agreement with adding some form of amendment to, to consider and to, to possibly draft for, and that, uh, Councilwoman's, Councilman's, Councilman's Gringy. And I guess myself at this point would not be in favor in light of the state law that's, that's pending. But I think, you know, I think that to get it on the record even Monday, that we've acknowledged it, that we, you know, I, I, you know, I, I would voice at least my agreement on the record that I, I, I'm glad that the state did this. And, and I think it, it simplifies it for, you know, councils like us across the state that are considering things like this and addresses the, uh, the concern of, uh, of this advertising and what it does potentially to, uh, young people. As they grow up and decide, you know, decisions that they're going to make as they get to be adults. So, so what do you think? Should we just report then to the council on Monday? Our discussion and, and just move forward from there?
That's fine with me. Sure.
I mean, at, at this juncture, what I would propose is just almost cutting and pasting the language out of the new state ordinance into our approval. So that you're, 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 you're making that applicable today. But that's, that's up to all of you.
So you, so you think it would be a good idea to do that and make it, now, I mean, what's the, what's the chance of him even opening before July 1st, let alone if we put it in? He's got, and he's got, he's got to have some build out and everything else, right? I mean, is there even a chance that it would even apply to him at all? Cause we, we're not going to make this applicable to the other two, right? This is just, or if we do that, we'd have to, is that something that we literally would target just to this one? Since the state ordinance is for the whole state, is this something we would literally then? I mean, I think the thought was originally, um, Ken, is that we would target this to this particular decision and this particular vote. If we do something like this, does that make it applicable to the other two, to citywide? What, what is that? What's the implication of that? Or do we target?
No, this would just be a condition of this approval.
Just this one approval. Okay.
Right. Yeah.
I wonder if we should, um, keep some of the language or something similar to what I proposed, just to explain the decision of why these conditions apply to this specific business. What, like specifically, um, to explain that this, this is because we are considering making an exception to a rule that prohibits tobacco sales. And therefore the reason why this language is included in this particular decision is to uh, honor the spirit of the law, but, um, or the zoning regulations, but, and therefore limiting tobacco sales in a different way. Does that make sense? I mean, we don't have to. That's just my, my suggestion.
I mean, I guess it makes sense in the sense that it's really, it's really what you're saying is in essence, we're, we're kind of making a, we're making a statement going along with it in essence. We're, we're showing, we're showing by some formal action that we, we, you know, consider, we, we consider the whole thing.
Yeah. And in, in my research that I was doing, you know, I was looking into what other municipalities have done or suggestions for state and local municipalities to limit tobacco sales. One of the suggestions that I read was, um, in order to minimize the chance that this would be viewed as an infringement on First Amendment rights of both the business owner and the tobacco companies that we, um, explain that this restriction is done because the other restrictions are not possible or desirable.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I got to be honest. This entire conversation, uh, in part, uh, is taking on a framework that in my opinion, it should not be. Which is that we're talking about this in a much more macro sense. When this is supposed to be a discussion about an amendment to a proposed bill that deals with a variance of a singular business. So, it seems to me that the only macro level discussion that should be taking place here should be with respect to the state law. Because that's the only thing that by definition has a macro impact. My concern is whether an amendment of this type is carried forward on a singular business. I have a very big problem with because by definition that is discriminatory to any other business that falls within those exact same parameters. Of which we know there are two other businesses that as the crow flies are closer to the school and have already been granted that variance. So this discussion, as it relates to this particular amendment, which we should be having and is good, should relate to the singular business on Shenango Street in question. And the impact of tobacco advertising. Not even the sale of tobacco products itself, which is the point that I was trying to get earlier. Because this amendment being proposed is about the advertising factor, not the sale of tobacco products. Those two things are obviously correlated, but they are also independent of each other. In theory, store X can sell tobacco products with no tobacco advertising. And I'm not saying I support that. I'm just saying in principle, that's the case. So this discussion has gotten far much wider than it should be. Which to me is very concerning. This is about a proposed amendment to a bill that has been held over, will. This is about a proposed amendment to a bill that has been held over, will be second read legislation. Six days from today and must be voted on. In either its original submitted form or with an amendment proposed to it. Or if a vote is actually held to change language. So I'm not really sure why there are so many divergent discussions about. Multiple businesses as it relates to this amendment in the City of Binghamton. I, I just, I'm, 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 I'm not trying to knock or push against anything anyone is saying. I just, for me. By definition, there's a lot of discussion that is going on here that is not germane to what this amendment is supposed to be for.
Okay, um. So. Ken, if we want to, if we want to vote, do we, would we vote to not send, can we vote to send or to not send this to Monday night? Or is that not an option for us?
No, that's not an option. I, I mean, as, as the councilman just pointed out, this is second read legislation next Wednesday.
Well, not that, I mean, that's the amendment.
So, so you have to, no, I'm saying you have to vote on the legislation. So, and as a committee, you say that. You know, we, we decide, our, our recommendation is don't make an amendment because the state is doing this and they're not going to be up and running. Or you can make a recommendation, yes, we think that this needs to be, you know, incorporated because we want to make it clear what, whatever that is. But you do need to do, you should make some report on Monday night.
Okay, but we don't have to have a three person vote right now to recommend or not recommend that.
No, it's, it's not that formal.
Okay. All right, well, I, I think that we've, you know, um, I appreciate all the discussion. I think, um. Regardless of whether, you know, I, I agree that we probably got off of a drift, but it's only been just over a half hour, so I don't think we've. Killed too much time in that, that process. So, you know, we're, we're all new to this process as well. So I think, I think it's been a good exercise, at least for me in that sense. To say what this, this could look like and to understand the formality or not formality of it. Um, and that's been very helpful to me as well. So Ken, I appreciate your time and joining us tonight and being able to share, share with that. Um, thank you, Lee, for taking, you know, for setting this up for us. Um. Thank you, fellow committee members, and thank you, Councilwoman Riley, for taking the time to join us. So, um, I guess we should adjourn the meeting and have a great weekend and we'll see you Monday night.
Everyone have a good night. Enjoy the night.
Okay, have a good night.
Most of you, have a good night.